Yeah, I know. It does.
Don's got a Valentine's dinner to make tonight. Every Tuesday is Valentine's dinner for Don. So just know that's my approach to these meetings. Every Tuesday is Valentine's dinner for Don.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is now seven o'clock PM on Tuesday, July 25, 2023. Let me welcome you all to Richland County Council's zoning public hearings. This meeting would now come to order.
Reporting in progress.
Brenham.
Here.
Pugh.
Here.
McBride. Livingston.
Here.
Teresa.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English. Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I'll also let the record reflect that Councilwoman McBride is absent this evening. She notified me that she is actually traveling on... That is not Councilwoman McBride. But Ms. McBride is traveling on business and will not be with us this evening, and we wish her safe travels. Next item on the agenda is item three. Any additions or deletions to the agenda, Mr. Wright?
Yes, I would like to add an item for executive session regarding interim procedures for the land development code pursuant to Section 30-4-70A5.
Development code?
Yes.
And what was that? What was the statute again?
30-4-70, Section A5.
Mr. Wright, just based on the way the agenda is, I guess it's written, I think it would be easier to change item six, which was adjournment, to executive session, and then add item seven, which would be adjournment. So, okay, and Mr. Price, you recognize?
There are no additions or deletions.
All right, well, entertain a motion to...
Move for as a minute.
Second.
Move to properly second. Any discussion there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English. Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five, open public hearings. Item five A, map amendments, A1, case number 23-012MA. Name of the applicant is Michael Arnold. This is a request to change the zoning designation from residential multifamily high density to general commercial. The address, that is .25 acres. The address is 1559 Dalton Drive, TMS number R17012-03-10. The planning commission recommends approval and staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair, no individual signed up to speak.
All right, that public hearing is now closed. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Ms. Barron?
Thank you. We did have a town hall meeting for this particular parcel, and the applicant, their representative was present, and our community was able to engage with the applicant and to gather some good information also. I'm happy to report created a community partner. So with that, I move to approve.
Move to properly second. Any discussion there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five, open public hearings. Item five A, map amendments, A1, case number 23-012MA. Name of the applicant is Michael Arnold. This is a request to change the zoning designation from residential multifamily high density to general commercial. The address, that is .25 acres. The address is 1559 Dalton Drive, TMS number R17012-03-10. The planning commission recommends approval and staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair, no individual signed up to speak.
All right, that public hearing is now closed. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Ms. Barron?
Thank you. We did have a town hall meeting for this particular parcel, and the applicant, their representative was present, and our community was able to engage with the applicant and to gather some good information also. I'm happy to report created a community partner. So with that, I move to approve.
Move to properly second. Any discussion there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five A2, case number 23-014MA. Name of the applicant is David Cook. This is a request to change the zoning designation from rural to residential, single-family, low-density. The address is 2271 Hollingshed Road, amount of acreage, 5.63 acres, TMS number R05204-01-05 and R05200-01-38. The planning commission recommends approval and staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one individual signed up to speak this evening. Fran Cook?
Yes.
Would you like to come forward? Yep, that'll work. If you would, state your first and last name as well as your address. You'll have two minutes to speak, and you'll hear an alarm when your two minutes has ended.
Okay. Fran Cook, my address is 2271 Hollingshed Road, Irma, South Carolina, 29063. And then begin. Sorry, usually my husband's here to do this, and he is out of town. So he has written this, and I'm going to read it. My family and I have resided at 2271 Hollingshed Road, Irma, South Carolina, as our primary residence since September 2007. We are here today requesting that our property be rezoned from rural to residential low-density in order to obtain a five-foot setback to allow us to build a detached carport. We have spoken with all of our neighbors and have contingent slot lines and have received no objections of any kind from any of them. Also, I'd like to bring to the attention that all these neighbors are also zoned as residential low-density. We have already submitted the blueprint plans to the building department, and we were approved. Upon the approval is when we discovered that the current zoning requires 20-foot setback, which would prevent us from building our detached structure. We then requested a variance of setback from 20 feet to five feet, but were told by the zoning that the variance would not be approved and that the best course of action to take would be to rezone the property. We hired an engineering firm to resurvey our entire five-and-a-half acres to obtain a new survey and had it recorded with Richland County to allow us to apply for the rezoning. Done. That's it.
That's it. Well, thank you so much.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
Hey, that public hearing is now closed. Entertain a motion. Mr. Chair, you recognize, Councilman Brenham?
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve case 23-014MA for the map amendment as requested. As the applicant's spouse indicated earlier, the neighbors were approving of it. It does fit the area overall, and it also follows with the planning commission and staff's recommendation.
Second.
Move to properly second. Any discussion there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five A3. This specific request is in Councilwoman McBride's district. She is not present this evening. She has asked that this matter be deferred until the September 2023 zoning public hearing, so at this time, I entertain a motion.
Move to defer.
Second.
Move to properly second, non-debatable, so Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is item eight, case number 23-017MA. The name of the applicant is Blake Valentine. This is a request to change his zoning designation from rural to residential, single-family estate. Amount of acreage, 50.78 acres. Location is Mount Vernon Church Road, TMS number R01600-05-06, R01600-05-05, and R01600-05-01. The planning commission has no recommendation and staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. I'm sorry, you recognize, Mr. Brenham?
Thank you. I'd like to move to defer. This property is located in my district. We did hold a town hall, has received overwhelming response from those in attendance who were opposed to the application. I expressed those concerns to the applicant. He and I had a discussion here recently, and he asked for more time just to process that feedback, and that's the basis for my motion.
Second.
Properly second, non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five A3. This specific request is in Councilwoman McBride's district. She is not present this evening. She has asked that this matter be deferred until the September 2023 zoning public hearing, so at this time, I entertain a motion.
Move to defer.
Second.
Move to properly second, non-debatable, so Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
That will, for the record, that will be to the September zoning public hearing.
Okay. Councilman Brenham, please. Okay, so note it for the record. Next item on the agenda is item five... Oh, sorry. Five A5, case number 23-018MA. Name of the applicant is Mark Meadows. This is a request to change the zoning designation from rural to general commercial. Amount of acreage, 2.37 acres. Location, 239 Killian Road, TMS number R14781-01-53. Planning commission recommends approval. Staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two individuals that have signed up to speak. One for the project and one against... Sorry, this is not a project, the rezoning. One for the rezoning, one against the rezoning. Mark Meadows? You will state your first and last name, address, and you have two minutes to speak.
My name is Mark Meadows. I live at 239 Killian Road. The property that I'm applying to have rezoned general commercial. I bought this property approximately 17 years ago. At that time, the land was on a lake called Crescent Lake. It was about a 16-acre lake. In 2015, I'm sure all of us remember the flood that we had. It caused a lot of damage and loss of life. And at that time, it caused our dam to fail because our dam had not been properly maintained. It had had the trees removed off of it for at least 50 years. The lake is in a trust. The people, us around the lake, tried to get it rebuilt. We weren't able to do that. A few years later, the people that are on the property, the trust that controls it says that they would not rebuild the dam. The lake has now grown up from my house. I cannot see another piece of anybody else's house that I used to could see. There's one house next to me that I can't see that one, but other than that, the lake has grown back up. About four years ago, two sides of me was rezoned general commercial. The... This, my land has access to Killian Road from Governor's Pond Road and from my driveway, which is an easement that goes across Ms. Spears' land that's been an easement for over 120 years. It was the original road that went back into that area. Anyway, I've been contacted by a couple of different people looking at possibly using the land that's behind me, combining it with my piece of land also to give it a bigger piece of land for general commercial development. And at this time, I'd like for you to consider loading that it rezoned to general commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be David, looks like Strachey?
Strutter.
Strutter.
So he would like for me to speak, is that okay? Did we switch that? Is that loud or not?
I have to consult with our rulemakers. Attorney Wright, is that allowed for to give your time to someone else?
Yes, I think it should be, you know, it could have, it should have been the other person sign up, but I think just so it's the one, two minutes.
Okay. So if you would, and if you would come down, state your first and last name, and then could you also spell it for the record, just because I want to make sure I get it right?
Yes.
Your address.
Okay.
And then you'll have the same two minutes.
Okay.
That he signed up for once the two minutes has ended, you'll hear an alarm.
Okay, so my name is Gina, that's G-E-N-A, and the last name is Dow, D as in David, O-W. I own property at 1107 Killian Loop and also at 108 Lib Lucas. So this is actually kind of a replay on what, and I did speak at the last meeting. The things that Mr. Meadows is speaking on, one of the first things I wanted to say is we were here a little over a year ago with Mark Meadows, fighting this actual process with another developer, and he was on our side of the fence at that time. So before he decided to sell, it was a priority for him as well to keep it from being zoned commercial. We have a serious infrastructure problem, horrible infrastructure problem around our property. We, the people that are here, and myself, all live downhill from this particular property, and we have roads that are currently washed out, drainage systems that do not exist. We literally have caution tape and cones right now, keeping people from driving off the edges of roads. So for us, it's a huge priority that infrastructure be corrected because it's already such a problem. We have roads that are flooded that we can't leave our... My family cannot get out of their home when we have two or three inches of rain unless they use four-wheelers. So there's elderly people that live on the other side of this property that we worry about, you know, EMS and fire rescue and so forth getting to. Also, the other thing I want to mention is the lake that Mr. Meadows is referring to has been purchased. Half of that has been purchased by me and my brother, and we intend to restore the lake, that Mr. Meadows knows about that, clear the area and return that back to what it used to be. So I'd like for that to be considered. That's not going to remain that way. He is correct that the family that owns the dam did not or will not correct that, but we are taking the initiative to return our property back to what it was. And part of that too, and we've spoken with Ms. Barron about this, part of my problem with that is DEHEC did several citations on the family that owned the dam.
That is your time.
That's it. Okay, that's okay.
Thank you so much, it's all right. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
Our hearing is closed. At this time, entertain a motion.
Here.
You recognize, Ms. Barron?
Thank you. And again, as it is my custom in our District Seven that we host town hall meetings for all rezoning, we had a town hall meeting for this particular property as well. I think that we had some very healthy conversation and gathered a lot of information. Since that town hall meeting, I've also gathered some additional information, some of which Ms. Dow shared today about the serious concern about infrastructure, not just on Killian Loop Road, but also Killian Road, North Pines Road, and Wilson Boulevard. I've spoken to Mr. Price along with representatives from SC DOT and some of our state officials who all are aware of these challenges. These infrastructure challenges are not just about basic runoff, but it is about roads flooding. It's about having drains that should be there that are no longer there because they're blocked up. This is a huge problem that we really need to look at before we start rezoning and continue to rezone properties, especially in the northeast area where we have significant growth. And I think that that's critically important, that we will have growth, and I'm not denying that, but I do think that if we have homes that are still being flooded as a result of the 2015 flood, where it was said that the infrastructure was repaired and replaced, and their homes are still being flooded, not just Dow family, but families that are in Lake Elizabeth, they can't get out of their car, they can't pull out of their carport because of the amount of water that's run off in that area. And I've spoken to Mr. Meadows and shared in detail this afternoon some of the concerns that I have, not just about his property, but all the properties in that area. So because of that, I will, I'm moving to defer this project so that I can gather more information and also work with state and local officials to see how we can rectify this challenge in the community. And Mr. Price, I am not putting a date on this deferral because there's lots of information that we have together, and I would, before I, before I say no or yes, I think that we need to have all the information. So if that is appropriate, I would, I would just like to defer until...
Right, I believe a date is required for deferral, right? So maybe not...
I must have a date?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will, I'll start, and I'll just defer it until September, and if I need to defer it again, then I will. Thank you.
Aaron, would you prefer October, just to err on the side of caution?
In all fairness, we may get the work done, and so I don't want to delay anything that Mr. Meadows and his family may have if we find favorable information.
Okay. Go second.
Second.
Move to properly second, non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five A7, case number 23-020. Name of the applicant, Scott R. Armstrong. This is a request to change his zoning designation from rural to residential, single-family, medium-density. Location, 113 Beaver Dam. Amount of acreage, .58 acres. TMS number R22707-03-02. Planning commission recommends approval. Staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, that public hearing is now closed. At this time, I, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for approval?
Second. Move to properly second. Any discussion there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item eight, or I should say five A8, case number 23-023MA. Name of the applicant is Kevin Steelman. This is a request to change the zoning designation from light industrial to residential, single-family, low-density. Location, 111 Pine Wedge Drive. Amount of acreage, 21.98 acres. TMS number R17700-01-94 and R17700-01-14. Planning commission recommends approval. Staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have six individuals that have signed up, three for the rezoning, three against the rezoning. We'll start with the four. Jeff Benson. Jeff Benson. There we go. And I'm also going to call the second person's name as well. You can go to the other mic. Joe Henry. Mr. Benson, if you would, begin with your first and last name, your address. You have two minutes to speak.
My name is Jeff Benson. I reside at 100 White Oak Ridge Lane in Blythewood. I'm the pastor of Willow Lake Church. We've owned the church for over 20 years, and a warehouse approached us about purchasing 17 of those acres and which we declined because we felt it would hurt our neighborhood, the values of their homes would drop. And our congregation recommended that we change the zoning and sell the land to Mr. Steelman and his company so that other homes like the ones around us could be built, and it would not hurt the value of their land. Our congregation unanimously is for this, and I think one of our gentlemen is here, and he represents several families that live in the community. So we humbly request you to approve that.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Henry, if you would, state your first and last name, address, and you have two minutes.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Joe Henry. I live at 86 Sunset Maple Court in Blythewood. So I live in Willow Lake. I'm also a deacon at the church, so I have a foot in each side of this debate. As the pastor was saying, we did have an opportunity to, someone came to us with the idea to build a warehouse, which would not have required any rezoning. We felt like that did not fit the nature of the community. We have about six to seven families in our church who live in the community, including myself, so we immediately turned that down. We were approached by Mr. Steelman in order to... We were approached by Mr. Steelman in order to build a low-density housing development. Now, we were pleased with that. Our zoning permits us to go up to mid-density. We didn't feel like that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to stick with a low-density in order to allow the development to have as little of an impact as possible on the community. That was our goal. So as a church family, we felt like that was a good way to go. It allowed us to only sell almost 15 acres. The entire severance acres in the front of the property will remain with the church. So the whole frontage, other than one small road that will access the development, will be the church. So it'll be actually hard to see these 50 houses. So these 50 houses will be joined with the Willow Lake community, which has hundreds and hundreds of houses, so it's a small number that we're adding to it. So we were pleased to get the recommendation from staff as well as the Planning Commission, and we would appreciate the opportunity to receive your approval tonight. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is, is it Matt Catherine?
Coffin.
Coffin. I apologize.
That's okay.
If you would, state your first and last name as well as your address.
Sure.
You have two minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Matt Coffin, 601 Hampton Trace Lane, Columbia, South Carolina. I'm here with Land Tech. Worked with Kevin Steelman. Our plan is to build residential, single-family subdivision, kind of harmonious with the existing Willow Lake development. We built Phase 7 in Willow Lake and are pretty well-versed in the community. Obviously, we feel like this will be beneficial to the community as a whole and the church with having residential subdivision instead of some of the potential uses available in the LI development. And I'm here, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Next are three individuals that signed up against the rezoning. Jada Addison. And then Michelle Riviere Williams. Would you also come down to the other mic? Don't want to speak? Okay. Gregory Tucker. All right. Ms. Addison, would you state your first and last name, and then you have two minutes.
My name is... Sure. My name is Jada Addison. I reside at 104 Upper Glen Drive in Blythewood, South Carolina. I do live in the Willow Lake subdivision, and I have lived there for the past 16 years. My concern with this particular rezoning is the entrance. We have no other way to exit or enter into our subdivision besides one specific way. There was one particular point in time where the train tracks were stuck on the track, and I was sitting there for two hours because I could not enter. So that's my only concern. I understand that everybody wants to be harmonious, but we really have to be very considerate of people being able to enter and exit the subdivision, considering there is only one entrance and exit to the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, if you would.
Okay, basically, he said what I wanted to say, but I'm... Okay, I'm grateful.
So you say your first and last name, address, and two minutes.
Okay. My name is Gregory Tucker. I live at 214 North Hydeup Trail in Blythewood, South Carolina, which is in the Willow Lake subdivision. She said it about, we only have one way in and out of there. Also, you're making the notice itself, when they put the notice up, it did not say low-density. It said commercial. And so that's the reason I'm here. But then now, when I get here, there's something different written down for you all to say in low-density. Adding 50 more houses to that area would really create a problem. It would really be a problem for, you know, the infrastructure is for us getting in and out. You know, the church is fine, but just adding that many more houses to that particular part is like... You actually, you're putting a group in one spot into where, you know, like she said, the two hours, she waited two hours on the train. Members of council, let me explain. We've got, we need another way in and out of Willow Lakes. We really do. They've already started building a phase, I guess it's Phase 7 on the back of Willow Lakes. And like I said, we have hundreds and hundreds of houses. And you're looking at maybe at least almost 1,000 cars coming in and out of Willow Lakes. And we're not even talking about when they start building. When they start building, it's really going to create a problem. So we actually really not approve this today. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak.
Hearing is now closed, so at this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize Councilman Pew?
Mr. Chair, I would like to defer this item to our September zoning meeting.
Second. Property second is non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item 5A9, Case Number 23-024MA. Name of the applicant is Harry Walsh. This is a request to change the zoning designation from planned development district to amended planned development district. Amount of acreage, 3.08 acres. Location, Kennerly Road, rather. TMS number R04100-03-82. Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff recommends approval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak? Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, you recognize Councilman Brenham?
Thank you. I want to move to defer. This PDD is part of the Ascot PDD from back in the 90s. And I've heard from some individual residents within the Ascot neighborhood and have not had an opportunity to speak with the HOA leadership there and some of the other stakeholders. I had a chance to speak briefly with the applicant here before the meeting. So I just wanted to defer that to the September zoning public hearing so that I could just complete some of those conversations.
Your second.
Second.
It's been moved to property second. That's non-debatable. Madam Clerk?
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, next item on the agenda is Item 5A10, Case Number 23-024MA. Name of the applicant is Austin Watts. This is a request to change the zoning designation from rural to rural commercial. Amount of acreage, 1.99 acres and .61 acres. Location, 1301 Three Dog Road and ES Dutch Fork Road. TMS number R01507-02-03 and R01507-02-02, I mean 04, rather. Planning Commission recommends disapproval and staff recommends disapproval. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we had two individuals signed up for the rezoning. Kathryn Williams. Okay, Kathryn Williams does not want to speak. Terry Rowell.
We've got to stop meeting like this.
Well, so glad you're here. If you would, state your first and last name, address, and you have two minutes.
Terry Rowell, 3635 Kennerly Road, Irma, South Carolina. This piece of property went on my radar from being down here for some other things. I went and looked at the map itself. This road, Highway 76, is basically a totally commercial road from where it branches off from 176, which is Broad River, all the way to Chapin. Property on either side of this property has already been zoned. They're putting up some more storage sets right beside it. And I don't see why this property should not be allowed to put a gas station there. It's my understanding that when the new map goes through, this property is going to be rezoned to general commercial anyway. So I say, let's not wait, make these people wait another year to try to get it through again. I'm telling you, everything up there, there are very few houses. It's a corridor of businesses. So I recommend that you please approve it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that includes all individuals that signed up to speak.
Oh, someone has it. Well, she had her hand raised early. I wasn't sure if she was the person that had signed up. Were you signed up? Did you sign up to speak, ma'am? Okay, I believe the vice chair, she had asked if you wanted to speak. Did you say you wanted to speak or you did not want to speak? You wanted the gentleman here to speak on your behalf? Well, we've kind of already opened that Pandora's box, so... The public hearing has been closed. It can be entertain a motion to reopen the hearing.
Oh, moved.
Second. It's been moved to property second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, Mr. Chair.
The individual that signed up was Kathryn Williams. Kathryn Williams is giving her two minutes to someone else. Yeah. But come down, state your first and last name. I need you to spell it for the record, as well as your address. You have two minutes.
My name is John J.O.H.N. Atchley, A.T.C.H.L.E.Y. Address is 200 South Tryon Street, Charlotte, North Carolina. As mentioned, the history of the zoning surrounding this parcel, there has been a precedent set in this area. There have been five different rezoning cases brought before county council. All have been rezoned to commercial. There are three sides of the property. It is bounded by railroad right-of-way and two other commercial zonings. Directly across the street is a general commercial zoning, which has a broader list of allowable uses. The proposed zoning for this specific parcel would be rural, commercial, which there would still be size limitations to what the applicant could put on the parcel. In addition to these following reasons, there are restrictive covenants for the property that the applicant would have to adhere to. The proposed development would have to conform to all SCDOT requirements, being that both of the adjacent roadways are SCDOT roadways. That would conclude my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, that concludes individuals.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right, public hearing is now closed. At this time, entertain a motion. Mr. Chair, you recognize Mr. Brenham?
Thank you. I want to make a motion to deny this application. Follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission and the staff for disapproval. There may be a different non-residential zoning that would be appropriate. This property does but a neighborhood, so that could be a hint as to what might be appropriate as far as non-resident. But that's my motion. Thank you.
Your second.
Second.
Move to property second. Any discussion? All right, there being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion to deny approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item 6, Executive Session. This pertains to interim procedures for the Land Development Code. Entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to property second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, we're in executive session.